Welcome to Lamore City Council Chambers, 429 C Street, month, May 21st, 2019 year. Please sign all electronic devices of those in attendance, thank you. 5:30 study session, SS dash one, Ethics and Brown Act Training, Part Two. City Attorney?
Good evening, Council Commissioners and members of the public. Tonight, we are going to do the second part of the ethics training. And tonight, we will cover personal financial gain and personal advantages and perks. Just a reminder that the ten rules of public service, if you follow these, that we talked about these last time, approach your job as a service to the public, promise only good, fair, and honest service. Pay for your own lunch, buy your own tickets, accept gifts from family and return, friends, return other gifts, ask the city to pay for your business travel expenses, do personal business outside of the workplace, be open and transparent, be honest in all your dealings, and always do the right thing even when no one's watching. So if you remember those ten rules, you should be good. Tonight, we're going to have a little bit more of an interactive presentation, and so if you brought your cellphone or your, an electronic device, if you'll go to your browser and type in pollev.com/lizano smith, we're going to have some questions on here. This is a software system that allows you to answer my questions anonymously, so members of the public, please feel free to respond, commissioners as well, and so we'll get to see in real time everyone's answers, but we won't know who's saying them. Okay? So take just a minute to go to, it's, go to your browser on your cellphone, or iPad or whatever, and then go to pollev period com dot, dot com slash backslash lizano smith. And when you get there, you should see a question that looks like this, how do you define corruption? So if anyone needs help getting logged on, let me know, but you may now answer this. So just enter a response, a one or two-word response, how do you define corruption? You guys getting, are you guys connected, some of you? Oh, fraud, intentional dishonesty. Wait for a few more answers, just because I know there's more people. Do you have trouble?
No.
Do you have to get rid of HTTPS?
No, let me go back, so.
You don't need it.
You don't have to have HTTPS, but just type poll, you should just be able to type poll in your browser like you're doing a search, C-O-L-L-E-V, period, C-O-M. Uh huh, dot com, and then, and backslash. Uh huh, A-N-O. S-M-I-T, is that correct?
I can't connect.
Are you, oh, if you don't have a, well, it should work on your browser, but do you have wifi on?
Hit settings.
Wifi is not connected.
Oh, that's okay. So I get it, good. Consider your response, I can't remember what the question was.
What is corruption?
How would you define corruption?
To be honest, I have no idea who's answering these questions. I will see it up here, but I won't, but I don't know who said it, anything. And there'll be times where I'll actually put the phone, you'll see that phone up, phone down coming, and I messed it up for you. I typed it wrong.
You put Lakers, you put Lakers, didn't you? I knew you did. I know you.
Well, that connected to wifi. You are in.
Yeah, that's why anonymous works really well, because then you can be honest and unafraid to put what you honestly think. And I haven't even looked at what the answers are yet.
City protected.
Yeah. If it smells mist, right, maybe I could get you logged on.
Interesting, no, I've been connected before. All right, I should be good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Yes, city protected. July 2015, if you can take it back there.
Okay.
You're welcome, all right. So what we got, we've got illegal, unethical, abuse of authority for personal or public gain, real bad, selfish, fraud, intentional, the Lakers, Holly, unfair personal gain, crooked, dishonesty, something illegal. Okay, so those are, those are, most of those answers, I will be politically correct here, most of the answers are, only child, okay. Most of those answers are close to the definition of corruption. Corruption basically is, so you can go ahead and put your phones down, keep it on, logged on to the browser, because from time to time, there'll be slides that I'll ask you to ask to answer a question on. Public corruption is dishonest or illegal behavior essentially, especially by powerful people inducing, inducement to the wrong, to wrong by improper unlawful means, so basically bribery or abuse of power. Public corruption, you would think that over time, you wouldn't see it as much, but I can tell you it's still occurring. In August of 2014, the United States Common Sense did a report, basically, on average, there's approximately a thousand public officials nationwide who are convicted of corruption every year. That was in 2014. Out of 70 California corruption cases, half of them involved money, the other, all of them involved a quest for power. So some of the highlights from that report, bribery and monetary misconduct was the most common, 54% of the cases. Of those cases, 18 were state cases, 13 were federal. Forty-nine of those cases were in Southern California, 21 in LA alone. Four of those were from the Central Valley, and 18 of them were from Northern California. The average indictment was about a year, almost two. The crime average lasted about three years, meaning it had been going on for approximately three years in those cases. Police corruption was only about 21% of the cases. 29% involved highly ranked officials, including mayors or council members, and so basically that means 20 out of the 70 cases involved an elected official. And the nine of them got to return to their public office, 53 were banned from their public office, and eight were unknown whether they got to return or not. So you think that corruption's not close in Clovis, operation, I don't know if any of you are around, but California, Clovis, California, Operation Rezone, this was in the 90s. And some of the headlines, FBI inquiry continues to unearth corruption, former mayor says he's done with nothing wrong. These are the other headlines here. These are the headlines that appeared in the papers during Operation Rezone. Basically, in 1994, Clovis City Council members were charged under federal laws for tying campaign contributions in exchange for favorable votes to land developers. That's what Operation Rezone was. They were caught because the developers wore wires during the conversations. There were, many of the individuals involved pled guilty, did serve jail time, had financial consequences, there was embarrassment to the city, obviously, and any of the actions they voted on were null and void. Yeah?
And I don't mind saying, because my brother's passed now, but everything you're he's seen there is true, because my brother was the mayor and went to prison for a year. He was part of Operation Rezone.
Yeah.
So she has all that, you don't really relate, because his name was Dave Lawson, so half brother. So watch what you do.
Watch what you do, that's right. Beaumont, California, Inland Empire, so these are some of the articles from Inland Empire. This was in 2016, so this is just three years ago. Six were jailed in a $43 million public corruption case. Seven former Beaumont officials pled not guilty. There was a moratorium on, for Inland Empire corruption cases, and the assets were frozen and seized. So for six years, this investigation occurred over a six-year period, the FBI and the district attorney investigated local public agencies of Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. They included the former city manager, the police chief, the public works director, the city attorney, the economic development director, finance director, and city planner, and all were indicted for embezzlement and misappropriation of public funds. It was a comp, basically, this case involved a complex scheme of kickback money to consultant firms owned by department heads. Okay, so phones up. What is the right thing to do? You've got a couple choices here, be open and fair to others, avoid self-dealings, do not oat work on projects that you might have financial effect on you or your family, remain impartial, avoid bias, whether for personal or financial reasons, or all of the above. So as we see, a lot of people are answering all of the above. And like I said, it's real time, so as you see people changing their minds or reconsidering or taking their answers off, you can see that, because it goes 14, 13, 12. So I would say yes, for, all of the above is probably the most appropriate response. When you come up across an issue, when you're asking, what's the right thing to do, you should ask yourself three basic questions. Will this project have a financial impact on me? Is there a reason I cannot be impartial on the project? And do I have personal interests in this project? If any of those are yes, recuse yourself. So what do you do when you find yourself answering yes to one of those questions? Well, stop and confer with someone, whether that's your supervisor, if you're a department head, the city attorney's office, online resources, the FPPPC. If there's a, oftentimes, these are very fact-intensive evaluations, conflicts of interest are not readily apparent necessarily on their face, it's not that easy, it's like, it's not like a council member owns the business, right? It's usually not that clear of a cut of an issue. There's hundreds of rules, the Conflict of Interest book is approximately an inch and a half thick. When I get a question about conflicts of interest, I have to look it up every time, not because I don't know the laws, but because they change constantly. In fact, tonight, we're going to be talking about a law that was changed under the conflicts of interest that started May 22nd of this year, so, March 22nd, excuse me, of this year. So that's how fast they change. From the time that I did the first part, I had to update the second part because of the newly changes in law, okay? So remember that, and I think I'll talk about this a little later too, but remember, if you call the FPPC, a conflict of interest is your conflict. So if you're a council member, a city employee, a commission member, it's your conflict, and you are the only one responsible and can be fined for, or results are to you personally, right? So if you get, say, I tell you, oh, I don't think it's a conflict, it doesn't matter what I tell you, it doesn't matter what, you know, the city manager tells you, it doesn't matter what another council member tells you, it only matters what the FPPC tells you, and only if it's in writing. So if you get it up verbal on the phone, ask them for it in writing. So personal gain, bribery. So bribery is when a public official cannot solicit, receive, or agree to receive a benefit in exchange for their official actions. There's a number of penal code sections that are, that would apply, basically, it's penal code section 67, 67.5, 68, penal code section 165, 86, and then government code section 89513. No, you guys don't necessarily care about all that, but if you wanted to, you could look it up. Okay, phones up. So what are possible consequences for accepting a bribe? One or two, three words to describe what happens if you accept a bribe. Termination, if you're a city employee, probably, jail time, jail. Go to jail. Criminal civil liability, vacant office, right? Vacate your office. Termination, prison. Prison, fine, embarrassment, cell block six. Life with Holly. Okay, so a lot of people realize that there's prison time available, and that is a consequence of accepting a bribe. Loss of office, someone mentioned that, loss of position, yes. Restitution, up to double the amount of the bribe and the attorney's fees for whoever brought the action against you. And campaign funds, if you have them, cannot be used to pay restitution. Okay, so phones down. So you think bribery, people wouldn't do it, right? Nope, they still do it. So the mayor pled guilty to bribery in South Elmonte. Basically, he pled guilty to accepting $45,000 in bribes from a city contractor in exchange for approving the city contract. He spent up to 10 years in federal prison. He was sentenced to 10 years, we don't know if he spent all 10 years, but he was sentenced to 10 years, and the, there was pending comprehensive state audits of the city records. What that means is, the state came in and looked at the city's payroll records, the audit reports, the personnel records, all contracts, and all purchasing invoices. So basically, they turned the finance department upside down. The California Political Reform Act, public officials, whether elected or appointed, shall perform their duties in an impartial manner, free from bias caused by their own financial interests or their, or the financial interests of a person who they support or who supports them. Remember the ten rules? This is really kind of the ten rules, right? Then the, basically, the general rule is you can't make or participate in a position or use your official position to influence a decision if the decision could reasonably and foreseeably materially financially affect that official, the official's immediate family, or any other financial interest that that person may be connected to. And that's influence either negatively or positively. So you can't say, well, I lost money on it, so it's not, it's not a, it's not a violation. No, it's either positive and/or negative. Previously, these rules were described in five different regulations, they have condensed it into one. So this is the general rule.
Can I just argue?
Yes.
Because it's government, it's tried in federal court, not local courts?
It could be tried in either.
Okay.
Because it's the government, the California government code that you're violating, you also violate potentially some federal laws. Public, generally, public exceptions, so the general rule is no conflict, there is no conflict of interest, where the financial effect is indistinguishable from the public generally. So if an elected official isn't going to get any more benefit or any other detriment than any other member of the public, then it's typically an exception to the general rule of financial interest. But watch for officials, government officials, interests cannot be unique, basically, you can't, it can't be somewhat different. You have to watch for disproportionate effects, and so what you want to look at in developments in particular is the potential for increase or decrease in the property values, the proximity to the project, the cumulative effect of multiple interests, income, personal finances, substantial increase in business volume, if you own, if you own a business, those are all things that might create the, a unique situation for an official. The Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC, our administrators and enforce the Political Reform Act, they, our consultants are available to provide phone or written advice, but remember that, as I said earlier, only written advice can be relied on in either a civil or a criminal prosecution. So the material, materiality standards, to determine whether your financial interest is material, you need to look at these things. The impacts to the business entity, to sources of income, gifts, official, to, in the official or the immediate family's personal finances, and in real property. Okay, so types of economic interests. So you have business entities. This is the new catch-all test, by the way. So if, even if the business entity is not the subject of the decision, the effect is material if a prudent person with sufficient information would find it reasonably foreseeable that the decision's financial effect would constitute, contribute to a change in the value of the business entity or stock. So basically, if somebody thinks that you, you potentially, a reasonable person thinks that you're going to get money or have a financial interest in this, you need to look at that. This is for investments for employees or management, $2,000 or more, basically. Another type of financial interest is source of income. So you need to look at the income from the sale of goods or services, including salaries, income from the sale of personal or real property. There is an exception to income for individual customers from retail sales of a business entity, but when you're looking at sources of income, you need to look at your spouse's income, or anyone who supports you or your family, you have to look at your spouse, just because legally you have to, but also anybody that supports you, support. So for example, if there's an advantage to your children, and they live at home, and you support them financially, then there may be an impact to you as well. And it's, the amount of source of income where a conflict could occur is anything over $500 12 months prior to the action being taken. So this section cross-references other materiality standards, for example, where if the source is a nonprofit, then materiality exists that if the nonprofit will receive a measurable financial benefit or loss, or the official knows or has reason to know that the nonprofit has an interest in real property. So even nonprofits can create a financial interest for officials. Also, remember that there's a gift limit, effective January 1st of 2019, this gift limit went up to $470. And it's good until December 31st of 2022. So real property, so the, the slide didn't change. So this slide is the wrong slide. As of March 22nd, 2019, there's a new material, materiality standard. This slide is the old, old rule, okay? The new rule is that if your property, if the official's property is within 500 feet of the project, then there is presumed there's a material impact, it's automatically presumed. If it's between 500 and 1,000 feet, then you need to review the factors to determine, and if it's more than 1,000 feet, then it's, there's a presumption that there is no material impact. That doesn't mean that there won't be, if just because it's more than 1,000, but it's less light, it won't be presumed that it's, that it's there. Always look for facts and ask why, what would a reasonably prudent person think if they were looking at this set of facts? So this council member was fined by the State Commission in Port Hume. The FPPC fined the councilman $3,000 for, because he did not recuse himself from a vote, allowing for a $370,000 and a $762,000 upgrade to the park. His house was within 500 feet of the park. The council member argued that the improvements were minimal, and that the 500-foot rule became more of a guideline in recent years, and the court said, nope.
So they argue after he got caught or before?
He got, after he got caught. So what would happen if the, there's a personal, personal financial gain? If you're disqualified because of a personal financial gain, and you, then you should not participate, you need not, do not discuss or influence your staff or colleagues, so if you're a council member and you're sitting on that dais, I'm going to recommend that you leave the room. Now, I've had council members ask me, I'm a member of the public, can I come speak as a member of the public? If you want to, you can, you should probably come to the podium, make your speech, make sure you're saying that you are a member of the pub, speaking as a member of the public, and not a council member, and leave the room. Because you're supposed to not influence anyone else. You need to identify the precise nature of the conflict, so if your property's within 500 feet, you need to say that, and you need to leave the room unless it's a matter of consent or something like that. And, and basically, you're trying to protect yourself, basically. The penalties for not doing these things is it would invalidate the decision, or could. It is also a misdemeanor, which means you could lose your seat, your office, you could be fined anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per violation. You have to pay your attorney's fees, and the person who brought the action against you's attorney's fees, and of course, there's personal and political embarrassment. Okay, so special rules for contracts. Public officers may not be financially interested in a contract, it applies to both oral and written contracts, and a legislative body cannot intrude into a contract if a member has a financial interest. We call this a 1090 violation. If there's a 1090 violation of a council member or a commissioner, the entire commission or entire council is prohibited to act. And there are, if there is, abstention isn't good in a 1090 violation, you can't just leave the room. If you have a 1090 violation, the council's prohibited from acting. I, a while back, had a client who was a school district, they happened to have properties for rent, one of the board members was renting one of those properties, they were severely under, the rent was like $100 a month, and this was in the, in the early, late 90s, early 2000s, and they wanted to increase the rent. They couldn't until that council, until that board member was no longer on their school board, regardless of fact that this district was going to lose money because it was a 1090 violation. So if they, if you act and there's a 109 violation, the contract is void and unenforceable, there's civil cripple and administrative sanctions, and with conviction, the public officer will be banned from holding any office ever again. Yeah?
And I walked out, I apologize for that.
That's great.
Did you go over the limited exception, what does that mean?
The rule of necessity? So the, I haven't said that yet, but the rule of necessity basically means that if there is a, it's a health or safety reason, and the city has to do something, so for example, you know, there's an emergency, the city of Lamore is flooded, and you have to do something, and there's a, some kind of 1090 violation for some reason, I can't think of exactly what it would be, but then, because everyone would basically, the public safety would be at risk without acting, then it's called the rule of necessity, meaning you would have to do it. But in the case of a rule of necessity, you would still have, that individual would still have to abstain, so, that's the only exception, and the standards for the rule of necessity is pretty high. So we had, there's a elected official in a, in a travel agency business, voted on consent calendar to approve payments to her travel agency, $28,481 in total, failed to disclose, um... Failed to disclose, um, that she, that she had a conflict, basically. And there was a possible fine under the PRA for seventy-six thousand dollars. The ultimate fine ended up being twenty-nine. So, um, there are very harsh penalties. This was a, um, article out of Newark. You have to be very careful with these. This was Contra Costa County. So, contract is void if it's unenforceable, we talked about that. So, personal advantages and perks, there are two kinds of perks. Perks that others offer to you and perks that you give yourself, like using city resources. Another article, Colma, Colma official accused of illegally accepting gifts. You can see the article there. They, he accepted gifts from a card room owner and then voted on matters that benefited the card room business, basically. I don't have to make up stories, they're in the newspapers. So, gifts from others, so, uh, gifts do not always have bows on them. They can be meals, events, travel expenses, um, elected officials and executives, heads of public agency, as well as those who may have decision-making powers. And for all others, be aware of gifts from sources that do business with the city. Gift rules, just like the other financial rules, conflict of interest rules are very complex and there are a lot of them. I once had a, uh, council member ask me if, uh, there was a problem with the fact that he needed to get to a business meeting for the city in Sacramento and a friend of him was gonna fly him to the business meeting and asked if that was a problem. I said, well, that's a gift, probably a pretty significant gift, probably more than what the limits allow. He's like, well, but he flies me around all the time. Yeah, but he doesn't fly the public around all the time, and that's what you're gonna have to look at. So, um, be careful. Again, it's a friend, and so there was some arguments there. And again, I'm only an advisor, they don't have to take, you don't have to take my advice. But you should call the FPPC, which is what I told him to do. So, you have to report gifts of fifty dollars or more from a single source. And you are limited to accepting up to five hundred dollars. Sorry, I said four seventy earlier, it's five hundred now, as of January first. For a single source, uh, per the calendar year. So, for example, if you have someone take you out to lunch and it's twenty-five dollars, right? That's probably okay, you don't have to report that necessarily. But if they take you out to lunch, uh, forty times throughout the year, then you're at the five hundred dollar limit, so don't go through that forty-first, obviously. And you'll probably have, and you should probably report that on your, your Form 700s. So, on, um, basically gift filers, you, payments for speaking, writing, or attending events. If you receive those, you need to report those on your Form 700s. Communications are part of the official service, unless the communications are part of your official service, but then you shouldn't be getting paid for it separately. And the consequences and penalties are up to five thousand dollars per violation for gift violations. So, gifts from others to the city. So, it has to be, it must be used for official city business. So the city manager has to control who can use the gift, and it still has to be reported on the Form eight oh one for the city. So basically, at holidays time, they give you, you know, a gift basket from somebody comes to the city. The city manager can accept that as long as he doesn't accept it for himself, but he just gives it to whoever in the city, probably best to give it to entire staff, just let anyone who wants to come get it. And you still have to report that. And so, basically, if you wanna, if people send the city gifts, it might be a good idea to tell them, you know, thank you very much, we appreciate the kindness, but really, we have to be careful about accepting gifts, especially if it's from somebody who has a contract coming to council the next week or something, right? And look at the factual situation. Okay, tickets and passes, there's lots of rules regarding accepting tickets and passes. This includes advan, admission to advance that the city operates. So I know that, for example, you have an annual banquet for employees. You shouldn't be accepting, the council shouldn't get free gifts to that banquet, basically. Within forty-five days of the distribution, you have to, the city has to complete and post the FPPC Form two oh eight, oh, eight oh two, excuse me. And these forms have to be posted on the webpage, basically, okay? If someone comes and offers you tickets to Disneyland for you and your family, probably should say no. Unless they're a family friend or something like that. But if they're a, the person that's coming, doing business with the city, be careful. So gifts from spouses, children, parents, grandparents, grandchildren, siblings, in-laws, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, first cousins are not gifts unless the, um, unless they are an intermediary. Meaning that if a developer, if, for example, if your, uh, spouse, um, if you and your spouse are having a, or you and your significant other are having a child and a developer wants to give you a gift for your child, um, that's the same thing. You can't, they can't give it to your spouse or your significant other and, and it's still a gift to you, basically. Gifts among friends are okay, as long as they're not disproportionate in value, meaning you give your friend a ten dollar Starbucks card and they give you a hundred dollar ticket to, uh, San Francisco Giants game or something, that would be disproportionate. Wedding gifts must be reported up to fifty percent of their value, but there's no limit on the amount of money, uh, amount of the gift for a wedding. And then except, there is an exception for bereavement offerings, acts of neighborly kindness, dating relationships, and acts of human compassion, so. Yes?
How does discounts work? Let me give you an example.
Sure.
You go to Lowe's in Hanford, get a ten percent discount if you're military.
Correct.
When they opened up the new River Park in Fresno years ago, they offered police and firefighters free movie theater tickets.
Right.
And our, our fire chief went there, police chief said, uh-uh, we're not taking free tickets.
Right.
There's people in line out there, can't afford those tickets, you can't. How does that affect this?
Well...
Anything new away, are you allowed? Can we go to Quiznos or not Quiznos? But, uh, Deli Delicious, they say, hey, you're a veteran, or hey, you're a city employee, free dinner, free lunch?
Veteran, yes, city employee, no. It's, it's, if, if they're giving it to you because you work for the city, no, right? But, I mean, veterans, I, my husband's in the military too. I get a veteran's discount when I go to Lowe's or Home Depot, right? But that's, everybody gets that, right? It's not you because you work for a city or a county or a government agency, basically.
So if that tastes good, don't bite it?
That's right. So travel payments, uh, I mentioned this one earlier, you know, you pay what everyone else has to pay, basically. So it has to be reasonably related to a government purpose and it's reportable, but it is not subject to the gift limitation if it meets the following circumstances. It's connected with a speech or a government action and the payment is made by the government agency. Now, you can't pay it, the government agency has to do it. So it'd be like a reimbursement for your travel expenses, as we talked about earlier. So, authorized expenditure, uh, use of city resources, I skipped one. So, the rule is, personal use of city, of public resources is prohibited. If you need to make copies for your personal business, don't use the city copy machine, okay? If you need to make flyers for a town hall speech that you're doing in your district, you can probably do it, but be very careful. I would still recommend that you do it. If it's a mass mailing, you can send, you have to make sure it is a mass mailing, meaning you have to send at least two hundred. So you cannot use it for mass mailings. If you wanna make twenty-five, probably okay, two hundred, no, all right?
What if the information, going back to that one?
Yep.
The, uh, what if the information was sharing that based on a measure?
So, the city is po, prohibited from supporting political, uh, a political referendum, agenda, whatever. So for example, Measure K, when Measure K came out?
Yeah.
And that was a county referendum, right? But it would affect the city. You should not use city funds to promote or dissuade against a particular measure. Now, if you're providing factual information, then you can do that because it's factual, but you have to be very careful that it doesn't promote or dissuade against, okay? You cannot use public resources for campaigning, basically. It should be actual and necessary expenses and know the city's policy and limits. Their city has a, um, expense policy, travel policy, those types of things, and you should look at that before you, um, commit to the, that. Misuse of public funds. It's, is when you're not authorized to use the funds or it's for, not for a public purpose, basically, when there's a personal benefit. So it's not a misuse of public funds. If a personal benefit occurs, but it's merely incidental. If it's for a public purpose, it, you can use those funds as long as it meets the requisite requirements. So consequences of violation for use of funds, it's a civil penalty. It's a thousand dollars a day fine plus three times the value of the resources used. So if you spend a hundred dollars in copies, it's three hundred dollars plus a thousand dollars a day for each day you use the resource. There are criminal penalties of two to four years in prison, plus disqualification from office. You can also have ta, income tax implications because you probably failed to report that on your income taxes. So Uncle Sam's probably gonna come after you for more tax money. And then it's obviously cost for attorneys to, uh, defend you in whatever actions brought against you. So the Sacramento suburban water district, like I said, I don't have to make these up. These are real life facts. Staff and directors misuse public resources. There was an investigative report by the Sacramento Bee. They used, uh, agency credit cards for per, personal purposes. Missed reporting of income, double dipping of expense reimbursements. And so because of that, uh, the legislatures passed A B one, two, three, four, which is why you have to do this training every two years, basically. So, the... I don't know, I don't believe Kings County has a public integrity unit, but I know other counties have adopted in their DA's office, public integrity units, in particular Fresno. And in the last five years, there's been at least three or four different, uh, elected officials that have been in the news because of the public integrity unit going after them, basically, for things similar to this, using company, city credit cards for personal use. Personal advantages and perks, best practice, avoid the perks and temptations to justify them. If you have to come up with a reason why you should have taken it, you probably shouldn't have taken it in the first place. It's legally risky and it's public relations headache. So let's talk about some scenarios. So phones up. Okay, so you have a city credit card, which normally you use only when you're traveling on official business. On Sunday, however, your daughter calls from college and tells you that she needs a new laptop because her old one has been destroyed when she jumped into the mosh pit. She refuses to give you any further details about that. You quickly purchase a new one online for nine hundred, but since the credit card is at home, you use the city credit card, knowing you will pay the bill when you get in. Since this is no cost to the city, is it okay? So, is it right? Go ahead and answer on your phones. Is it okay as long as you pay the bill later? No, it's not okay, but will likely not be investigated because of the low dollar value. No, the credit card may not be used for any personal expenses. Okay, so we have a lot of people with C, looks like one person with A, nobody with B. The correct answer is number three. Uh, pers, per the city policy, credit cards can only be used for business-related expenses while performing official acts. Also, it's unlawful, it's an unlawful use of ci, city resources to use the credit card for a personal business.
Scenario for you.
Yeah.
This actually happened, it was years ago.
Okay.
We had a city employee that lost their own personal credit card. And, uh, they were doing stuff. They used the city credit card, but they called the city manager, told them what was happening. And when they got back, they wrote a check for the difference. Is that legal or not?
I, I wouldn't recommend you do it.
Okay.
Will someone charge you with it? I can't tell you.
Yeah.
I can tell you that there's a case in Fresno right now where that scenario happened. They said, well, I paid the city back, they don't, the DA doesn't care. They're prosecuting him.
So don't leave home with one credit card.
Don't leave home with one credit card. And if you leave home with one credit card, make sure it's not the city credit card.
Yeah.
Okay, so Joe's an officer in the local fraternal lodge in town and a management member of the police department. Each year, the lodge puts on a bar event in connection with the community pig flying festival, and the proceeds are used exclusively for local charities and needs within the community. Joe received no personal compensation in connection with the event. The fraternal lodge expects Joe to use his city connections to help make the event a success. What should you do if you're Joe? Make all the necessary arrangements with the city and ensure that the event will go off smoothly. Appoint everyone, someone else to make all the arrangements, just don't worry about it. Okay, it looks like everyone says, appoint someone else. That's probably a safe bet, but to be honest, there's not really a correct answer to this one because Joe does not have a financial conflict since he's an officer for a nonprofit company and receives no compensation. However, he does need to be watchful for unlawful use of city resources, staff time, use of facilities and public, and he should also look for appearances of impropriety and ethics principles may apply even if there's no legal conflict. Okay, so scenario number three. During the holiday season, some vendors provide gifts to the city for whom they do business or would like to do business. An engineering firm has provided ten employees with gift baskets valued at seventy-five thousand, seventy-five hun, seventy-five, excuse me, seventy-five dollars each. Can the employees accept the gift? Yes, the basket would look beautiful under the tree. No, but everyone does it and it is an accepted norm? Or no, the employee may not accept the gift? Okay, you guys have been listening, that's good. The answer is C because it's more than fifty dollars. Okay, Nancy is an employee of the planning division. At a social function, Nancy's husband Jim meets Frank, a local developer, and tells Frank that they are shopping for a new carpet. Frank gives Jim one of his business cards and says, show it to the salesman at the Threadbear Carpet Store, which is known to have the best deals in town anyway, and tell the salesman you would like to ha, get the company discount. The developer doesn't receive the, any money for, from Jim or Nancy and spends any money or, or spends any money on Jim or Nancy, or even provides the store with any personal direction. Should Nancy take advantage of the discount? This is kind of like your question. So, yes, Nancy should be, should present the card to the salesman at the Threadbear store and see if she can get a better price than the last one she got quoted. No, Nancy should drop the card in the trash and continue ahead with shopping and negotiating prices, including the Threadbear. Or she should continue shopping and avoid the Threadbear store, even if she has to pay more somewhere else. So we've got a little bit of split decision here. Few threes, a few, a few yeses, she can do it, a few no's, she should go somewhere else, and a few no's she shouldn't, but she should try and negotiate herself. So the correct answer is two. The value of the discount likely meets the threshold of having a personal financial effect on Nancy, since she's getting quotes, you have to assume the carpet's pretty, a large item. If Nancy accepts the discount, she will be disqualified from working on any of the projects involving the developer because she now has a personal conflict of interest. And she can continue to negotiate with Threadbear on terms available to the public. That's the pub, same rule as the public, basically. To avoid the imp, the appearance of impropriety, Nancy should probably just return the card to the developer. If someone sees you take the card, even if you end up purchasing it from, even if you do number two, but they saw you take the card, they're gonna think that you got the discount. Okay, number five, upgrading amenities. So David works in the finance department. In the process of taking, talking with a home builder, David tells the builder that his family is purchasing one of the homes, the developer's homes. As it turns out, that this is the least expensive new home for sale in town, and when they're, and when this tract is built out, prices are sure to go up beyond what David's city income would qualify him for. The builder casually says that he had some custom upgrade cabinets that were ordered for a similar house and were double shipped, and he'd be willing to install them in one of his... And he'd be willing to install them in one of his homes anyway, when he says, I'll make sure it ends up in your home. What should David do? Thank the builder for his generous offer and be relieved that he's getting a good deal, that it's really not costing the builder anything more to provide him. Immediately decline the offer and take whatever he puts, gets put in the house in the way of cabinets without any further discussion. And accept the offer and figure out what the added value and declare the value on the conflict of interest form. Okay, so we've got a little split of opinion. Most people say B. The correct answer is B. The value of the cabinets will likely exceed the gift limit of five hundred dollars. And he'll be prohibited from participating in any decisions involving the develop- developer. Acceptance could also violate the city's policy, gift policy.
You know, even though it's legal, it looks bad.
It looks bad. Well, I don't know this one's legal because it's going to be more than five hundred dollars. I I can't imagine there's ca- custom cabinetry that's less than five hundred dollars.
The door.
The door, right, maybe. Okay, so prospective employees, employment. Jim is a public utility supervisor. He is responsible for overseeing the city's recycling operations, including contracts with private vendors. ABC Recycling Company has a contract with the city to provide recycling service. ABC is impressed with Jim's work and would like him to apply for a position of president or regional operations. No interviews or offers have been made, but Jim would like to be considered for the position. Contract renewal negotiations for ABC are up for consideration in three months. May Jim negotiate and accept a job with ABC? What do you guys think? Yes, he can, he may interview with ABC and accept an offer of employment, provided the negotiations are completed and offers accepted before the contract comes up for renewal? No, Jim should not interview and refuse any offer of employment unless his recycling management responsibilities are transferred to someone else. Or Jim may submit a resume, an application to ABC, but may not negotiate or accept an offer of employment while he's employed with the city. This one's a little harder. So and as we can tell, it's kind of split across the board here. The best answers are probably two and three. So B and C. Local officials may not make, participate, or influence any decision directly relating to prospective employers while they are negotiating employment or after they have reached an employment agree- arrangement. Submitting a resume without more is probably not considered negotiations. But anything more than that would probably be negotiations and he, even though he's not voting on it, he could influence the other members or people in the city. So material financial effects and bias. The planning commission is considering a CUP for a liquor store that will sell alcohol. John is a planning commissioner who owns a tutoring business in the same shopping center three stores away. John is also friends with an ABC investigator. When John learns of the proposal after the matter is agendized for the planning commission's consideration, John has a concern that the liquor store is too close to his business because his business is frequented by young children. John also knows that his friend, that the applicant has previously been investigated for selling alcohol to minors in other cities where the applicant does business. His friend also told John that the applicant has pending code, city code violations in other cities. How should John proceed? Oops. Did I lose my connection? So. Review the staff report. Call staff with any questions. Tell the commission about his concern and the location of the business and applicant, but abstain from voting on the matter. Two, refrain from any participation in the matter, including the deliberations. Or three, prior to the commission's consideration of the matter, identify on the record that he has a financial interest because he owns a business five hundred feet and remove himself from the room while the matter is considered. Okay, well, those are probably the best answers, but six is proba- I mean, those are the two better answers, B and C. The land use decision within five hundred feet of a property owned or leased by the official is presumed to have a material financial impact. Remember it, that's the new laws of March. So the planning commissioner may still speak as a member of the public to express his concerns, but he probably should do it at the podium and identify that he's doing it as a member of the public and not as a commissioner. Okay, council member. Contact a neighborhood association. Susan is a council member. She has concerns about a project in an environmentally sensitive area. She met with members of a neighborhood association, proposed to the project and discussed the project with them. The project came to the council for consideration of discretionary permits. The neighborhood association came to the meeting and opposed the project. What should she do, Susan do at the public hearing? Introduce the neighborhood association and ask them to speak in opposition to the project. Note her contact with the neighborhood association on the record, but express her belief that she can be impartial and therefore participate anyways. Recuse herself from participating in proceedings because of her prior contact with the neighborhood association and preconceived opposition to the project. Okay, so C is probably the best answer. Although there's no financial conflict of interest, Susan's preconceived position and contact with the association could be deemed to deprive the applicant of a fair hearing under common law bias, due process principles, and query about whether the project applicant needs to raise the bias issue. So this is an actual case. It's a NASHA versus the City of Los Angeles. It's a two thousand and four case. Okay, so phones down. So what's new for two thousand and nineteen? The basic principles still apply. Again, remember those ten rules. May now, you may now be more cause to seek FPPC advice on certain issues just because of the comp, the, the complicated issues that have arisen and the generali- generality of the new rules. And so if you have a question, seek FPPC advice and, but get it in writing. With that, any questions? This is also in your materials, there is some additional resources for you to contact, the AG, the California Fair Political Practice Commission, and Institute of Local Governments. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On travel. You travel to an event, city's paying your way, but then for some reason you don't make the event for all the days or you come back early or you just don't attend the event as scheduled as you're on that there, what would be your advice on a situation like that, please?
Well, so you kind of had three different scenarios there, right? So you travel, the city's paying for you to go. If you went and you still traveled, whether you stayed the whole time or not, you're probably entitled to the travel for whatever the reason is. If you, if you went for, you know, I would kind of, it's, it's your discretion, obviously, right? If you didn't go at all, you shouldn't take money for traveling. Those are the two easy ones. If you went but didn't spend the whole time there.
And like the, and then the city's paying for your hotel, but that's already paid for, so you didn't spend all the time there.
Right.
Those kind of things, that's.
That's, and that's going to be up to you, eh, you know, I, basically, like you said, it's already been paid for. If you went and traveled, regardless of how much time you spent there, you know, you probably should look at whether you want to reimburse the city for that or just not accept the, per diem, I guess is what it would be.
Yeah.
So.
But if, if you went.
Yep.
Even though you did not attend any of it, even though you were going to represent the city and came back, it would still look kind of strange that you didn't attend and probably be more prudent to even pay the public expenses.
I would agree. If you didn't, it's, it's like not going, right? If you didn't attend any of the business you were supposed to go for, it's probably like not going, right? It's more akin to not going than going and spending part of the time there but having to leave early.
It's best just to pay the city back their monies for the trip and call it.
Remember, it's not the city's money, it's the public's money.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'd like to know if that happens. I don't know if it did or not, but I'd sure like to know if it happened.
I don't know if it's happened or not.
I'm just bring, I'm just, I'm just, I was just curious, you know?
That, those are scenarios that happen, I think, occasionally from, I don't know that it's happened in this city, but I know that it's happened in other cities. Any other questions?
We all have electronic devices. I think it was the city of Stockton. They got sued for big bucks because council people were on their cellphones.
City of San Jose.
Tell them about that, how they.
Well, city of San Jose basically said that, well, maybe it was Stockton. San Jose basically says that it's.
That council person voted against them. Developer sued because the council person didn't pay any attention when they were doing their presentation or their own cell phone.
Yeah, so that, that's really, not really necessarily a financial interest, but it's, it's a divided interest, right? You have a fiduci- as a council member, as a commissioner, as a city official, you have a fiduciary duty to the public to make sure that you are making your decisions based upon the informed knowledge that's provided to you at the meetings, that you are not, that would be more like a Brown Act violation when you're on your phone and you're talking on the dais or whatever to each other. I know that, I believe that does not happen. I kind of watch for that. I have never seen that happen here. I do know that happens at other cities or has happened in other cities. You're hoping they're not talking about city stuff, right? Because conversations at a public meeting should happen in public unless it's one of the closed session items, basically. So that's more of a Brown Act issue, which we talked about last time, but yes, there's potential issues there. And remember that per the San Jose case, if you're using your cellphone, whether it's city paid or not, and you're using it for city business, those are public records. Except for mine, because I'm a city attorney.
Would it be appropriate if starting the meeting and this chair or mayor or members present in that meeting would ask still contemporaries to put their phones away or shut them off?
Yeah, and I think that the mayor does that for this meeting. Silents them. You don't necessarily have to turn them off. I mean, you should be paying attention, silencing them for sure. But, you know, council members should probably not be on their phones when the meeting's going on. That was, that's best practice, but it's not.
Silence, but you still have it down there.
You, you can, and, and it's not illegal to have it on, but it's probably best practice not to have it on or look at it.
A common way to question this with the last scenario. This is a small town and I think council members and planning commissioners are well known.
Yes.
And it's common, I think, at least it's common with me, if there's an issue or rumor going around, somebody's been asking about it.
Sure.
What can you say without getting into that recusal because you've had prior information, whether it's the neighborhood association or whatever it is? I mean, I could see potential, there'd be a whole lot of times, who would that, that people look to?
Yeah, right. To that, to that point, yes. So, I mean, there's a number of ways you could answer something like that, right? You could say, well, it's my opinion, my personal opinion that this, and then you can answer it any way you want, right? Because that's your personal opinion. You're not speaking on behalf of the commission or the council or anything like that. If it's come in front of the, the council or the commission previously, you can say, well, that was discussed at this meeting. This is what I recall from that meeting. That's okay, right? As long as you're not disclosing private information. Now, the commission doesn't have closed sessions, council does. Council has to be very careful about not disclosing closed session conversations because that's a, that's a violation and a penalty of law. It's a, it's a crime, actually. Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
And make sure you sign in and I will get certificates for, to this, well, not Marissa, she's leaving. But to the city clerk, make sure this is properly filed, we got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on the public in closed session. This portion of the meeting is reserved for a person's desire to address the council on items which is considered during closed session. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Any comments in closed session? I see there's none. Okay, going to closed session. This item has been set aside for the city council to meet in closed session. To discuss the pursuant of government code section five four nine five six point D, point nine D four. The mayor will provide an oral report regarding the closed session at the beginning of the next regular city council meeting. Conference with real property negotiator. Government code section five four nine five six point eight. Property lot four, APN zero four, zero two four, excuse me, slash zero five one slash zero one three. Lot fourteen, APN zero two four, zero five one slash zero one five. Lot fifteen, APN zero two four slash zero five one slash zero one nine. Lot sixteen, APN zero two four slash zero five one slash zero one eight. Agency's negotiator, Nathan Olson, city manager. Negotiating parties, Tom Voorhees, under negotiation price and terms. Anybody, are we going, we going into closed session? It's like six thirty-five? Going to closed session. Called to order. It is now seven thirty. Welcome to the Moore City Council chambers. I want everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remind standing. Dave Brown, can you do the prayer?
Everybody bow to the heads, please. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for all you've done for us and what you've done for our city. Watch over us, watch over this council, watch over our police department, fire department, all of our workers and our citizens of LeMour. Dear Lord, watch over us, give us the wisdom, courage, and strength to do what's right, to say what's right, and to act out what's right. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. There is nothing to report out on closed session. Agenda approval additions and or deletions? Roll call?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor Neal.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Billingsley.
Here.
Councilmember Blair. Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to E. Agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do we have any? I see there's none. Okay, we're going to go to public comment. Amy Ward.
All right, guys, I'm super excited. What else is new? All right, here we go. Don't laugh. All right, so two things we have coming up. Obviously tomorrow, if you have not yet heard, we're doing our business one oh one class in partnership with the City of LeMour, Kings County EDC, and the Valley SBDC, and the chamber. I'm going to be honest, guys, when we kind of came up with this idea and we started talking about it, I was really hoping for twenty people to show up. Our registration is up over seventy people, so.
Awesome.
Very excited about that. Obviously, we've hit a nerve in something that people want to talk about, so it is a free event and it's brought to you because of a partnership between the four organizations, so I do hope to see some of you guys there. Also, if you guys have not yet heard, Rockin' the Arbor is right around the corner. Our first one is May thirty-first and will run every Friday in June as well, so we hope you guys will be out there. We've got lots of bands, music, different kinds of music. We have food and informational booths and all kinds of fun stuff, so it's a really great summer concert. We hope you guys will come out and if you guys need anything from me, know where to find me.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Anyone else, public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Raquel White. I come from Fresno, California. I'm here representing an organization called Construction Industry Force Account Council, also known as CFAC. We are a nonprofit dedicated to create more job opportunities in the construction industry. We're a nonprofit, again. How do we do this? By monitoring agencies to make sure they are in compliance with the public contract code. How do agencies comply with the code? They do this by bidding public work projects over a certain bidding threshold. How do agencies comply with the code? They do this by bidding public work projects over a certain bidding threshold. Even though we represent the construction industry, we're also, we also can be a resource to agencies such as yourself when you have questions about bid splitting, change orders, advertising, and use of force accounts. We also encourage agencies to become CUKA signatory, which I know Lemoore is, as well as a charter city. I have a couple of handouts in my business card that I'd like to pass over to the clerk to hand out to everyone. Just wanted to introduce myself. I'm coming to all the cities here in the central California area. And if you have any questions, I'm open for those, but I won't take much more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, public comment?
I'm Connie Willashen, five two three C Street in Lemoore. I'm very disappointed, Mr. Mayor and the council, in the article in the Hamburg Sentinel this afternoon. Mr. Mayor, I feel you are a good and godly man, but but I, I don't have any confidence in your ability to lead the city council. I think you are a great goodwill ambassador for the city, and you, you look for the best in everybody. But in my opinion, Ms. Blair is not to be trusted, and I have a feeling that she has put these ideas into your head about the three council members wanting to remove you. I, and you have, I don't think she's doing the right thing for the city, and you have firsthand knowledge of her duplicity. The council members need to consider a vote of no confidence in you as mayor, but maybe continue as vice mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Reed, ten sixty-four, Avenue Lemoore. First of all, I don't have a problem with you being mayor, Mr. Neal. I really don't. And, but there are some things about that article in the Sentinel that troubles me. And one, of course, is the racial issue. That disturbs me. I don't think this is a racial city. Are there racial people that are racist? Certainly there are. But I can remember a few years ago, we had a sitting mayor, Billy Siegel. And someone brought it before the council, a council member, to reorganize the council and select a new mayor. And I believe that person was Council member Neal. It was not racial at that time. Also, when you were elected, I think as perhaps the first African-American city council member of this city, during that election, I don't recall hearing anything about ethnicity. And when you were elected the second time, as you said on numerous occasions, by the highest vote total ever given to anyone, ethnicity was also not an issue. So now, if you hear a rumor that someone may want to reorganize the council and select someone else as mayor, it concerns me that you go to the ethnicity as the reason. And that disturbs me. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Counsel, my name's John Frankhauser. Been a member of this, or resident of this city since nineteen ninety-two. Speak for no one but myself. But mayor, I have every confidence in your ability as mayor of this city, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you. Going on to ceremony presentations, I see there's no ceremony presentations. Department and city manager report section two, two dash one, department city manager report. Mr. Olson?
Good evening, mayor, council members. Is Chief German in the audience? Okay, he had a report, but maybe he's running a few minutes behind, so I'll just continue with mine. So, returned from ICSC this afternoon to make the council meeting. Huge turnout in, in Las Vegas for the event. We have a city booth there with Christie Bailey out of the planning office, and Judy Howell is there, representing the city, as well as Jay Salyer from the Kings EDC. We partnered with them, so we have, you know, hitting it from all fronts. I can tell you Judy and Christie walked ten miles, according to their stepmaster, yesterday. It's a lot of places to get around, a lot of people to see, but did set up a few meetings yesterday, and with a couple different industries. Some more to come on that stuff, but again, the show's still going on. They get back tomorrow night, so we'll have another update at a future meeting. Several months ago, the council approved a mural that was going to be over by the Amvets area. That location has fallen through, so a new location has been secured, so I just wanted to update the council. Actually, the third location has been selected, so Dr. Jeff Garcia has allow, or is allowing the mural to go up on the Tropicana building, right there on D Street on the west side. So the mural would face his, his eye care center. There's that empty lot in between, and the mural is removable in case we do develop in between there. He chooses to, we can move the mural. And then lastly, community roundtable. I'll be hosting one on the thirtieth at five thirty PM at Seven Eleven West Cinnamon. This will also be on our website. If you'd like to sign up, you can call five nine two four six seven four four, or you can email thecityclerk@lemore.com. There's some handouts over here that the city clerk has, and I'd love to see you there. That concludes it, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving along. We're gonna go to the consent calendar, section three. Three dash one, approval minutes, regular meeting, May seventh, twenty nineteen. Three dash two, approval, contract modification with JR Finance, construction and water treatment plant design bill. Do anybody in the public want to speak on this? Does anybody want to pull anything on the council? What, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Y'all make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I got a, I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Billingsley?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. I see there's no public hearing. New business, section five, five dash one, report and recommendations. Single auto report and year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Spear?
Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening I have Mr. Hinahosa here from Price Page and Company. They have been our auditors for several years. We've completed the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen audit several weeks ago, and so Mr. Hinahosa is here this evening to present to you the findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to share the results of the audit. My plan is to be brief and share the highlights, and I'm gonna be using this PowerPoint presentation. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the firm, the audit process, the areas of emphasis during the audit, the auditors' reports that were issued, some key financial statement items, so we're not gonna dig into any great detail. Some required communications by the auditing standards, and finally, glad to answer any questions. Also, as I'm going through the presentation, if any of you have any questions, just please interrupt me. We don't need to wait until the end. I'd like to talk just very briefly about the firm. I was at a city council meeting down south, and it was important to one of the council members to share, he wanted me to share a little bit about our firm because they were having some concerned citizens that were questioning the efficacy of the audit. And so he, that, he asked if we could share a little bit about that, so I've started to include that. We've been in existence since nineteen seventy-six, so over forty years, we're one of the top ten, probably one of the top five accounting firms now in Fresno and in the surrounding counties. We have a deep specialization in government, so that's what we do. Government audits, nonprofit audits. We audit probably ten municipalities, counties, special districts, et cetera. And we have forty employees. Our office is located in Clovis. Fourteen of those are CPAs, and several others that are getting their licenses. I'm the engagement partner, so I'm the CPA, and also a certified fraud examiner. Josh Giosa was the audit manager on the engagement. Anthony Gonzalez, who's CPA, was the senior auditor. And then we had other staff people that were also on the engagement. The audit process, just to share with you briefly, the process, the audit process requires that we assess risks of error and risks of fraud. So you're, you're paying us basically to issue an audit opinion. And we issue an opinion after we've conducted an audit, and that audit, again, we're looking for two things. We're trying to identify what are, what are the potential errors that can exist in your numbers, and or what are some potential frauds that could happen. Once we perform that assessment, then we perform audit procedures. A part of that assessment includes obtaining an understanding of the city's operations. The American Institute of CPAs, which promulgates the auditing standards, said several years ago, they changed the rules and said, we don't want the auditors to simply come in and start looking at the accounting numbers and in the software or in the general ledger, as we call it. We want the auditors to try to understand a little bit more about the city's operations, because the more you understand about a municipality or a company, the more you understand about it, about what's going on, the better you are at identifying risks of what could go wrong, of where people might commit some type of fraud, of where the errors might be. So we do that. We obtain an understanding of the operations. Very importantly, and secondly here, we obtain an understanding of internal control. Internal control is a process that helps the city to reduce and mitigate risks of error and fraud. And we're asking two questions. Number one, do you have an effective policy? So as an example, a standard internal control policy might be that all warrants in excess of five thousand dollars require two signatures. That sounds like an effective policy. Just because you have that policy doesn't mean that people are actually complying with the policy, which is why we look at the second item. Was that policy actually placed in operation? Was that control actually placed in operation? So we're doing two things, assessing the control and then determining whether that control was placed in operation. Once we've identified the risks, then we do that third bullet point. We develop audit procedures to obtain evidence about the numbers, but we only do that after we've identified the risks. Because we can start kind of going on a wild goose chase. You have hundreds of thousands of transactions probably in your accounting records, and we might be looking at everything. We don't want to do that. We want to target certain transactions that we think are the greatest risk, and that's what that risk assessment process and the audit process is really about. So a few areas of emphasis during our audit. We looked at cash, obviously, right? Because cash is something that can be misappropriated very easily, especially if you don't have internal controls over it. We looked at your revenues and your accounts receivable, your expenses, including salaries, current and long-term liabilities. And some of these, there are risks of misappropriation, and some of these, there are risks of error in how the transactions are accounted for and reported, and so we've got to be careful in all of these areas. Capital assets, that's a very big number, so that's your, your equipment, your buildings, your infrastructure. The net pension liability is a complex number that is provided by an actuary, and there are several significant disclosures in the financial statements, and so our job as auditors is to make sure that the estimate is reasonable and that all of the required disclosures are included. Finally, another area of emphasis was the federal compliance audit. You received funding from, you received some funding from HUD, basically, and that funding was through a community development block grant. Because it was in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we were required to determine whether you complied with all of the applicable compliance requirements. So that part of the audit, we don't have any discretion over. They give us a laundry list of compliance requirements, and then we go test each of those requirements, and then we issue an opinion that states whether or not you were in compliance with those requirements. So what were the reports that were issued? We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. I put there in parentheses, a clean opinion. So that is the best type of opinion that you can receive on an audit of financial statements. There are four opinions, an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, a qualified opinion, which says, yeah, the financial statements are good except for this one or two areas. There is an adverse opinion that says, sorry, these financial statements are not good. And there's also something called a disclaimer of opinion, which says, we were attempting to do the audit, but your books and records were in a condition that they were unauditable. So those are four types of opinions. Again, you've received a clean opinion and unmodified opinion. That opinion says that the audit was performed in accordance with the American Institute of CPA standards, as well as government auditing standards. The financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. I put that in bold and underlined it because an audit can't look at every transaction. We're looking at material transactions and making sure that they are fairly presented in accordance with the rules. Also, we're looking at your significant accounting policies, making sure that they are consistent from year to year. So you can't be changing your accounting policies to try to manipulate numbers, make things look better one year, worse another year, et cetera. You have to apply accounting policies consistently so that the financial statements are comparative. So a few key financial statement items. I'm just gonna point to page eight, the general fund. And so in your general fund, you had assets of almost ten million dollars and liabilities, current liabilities of only six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So this does not include your long-term liabilities, which we're gonna talk about here briefly in a minute. But that's what the accounting rules require, that when you present the fund, financial statements for the general fund, that you do at, do that on a basis of presenting the assets and then presenting only those liabilities that are current. And so that third bullet point says fund balance total of nine million dollars. That's basically the nine point seven million of assets minus almost over six hundred thousand dollars of liabilities for a, a net of nine million dollars. Fund balance is basically your net worth, if you will, right? Assets, what you own minus what you owe is your net worth, and so the general fund is in a position of having nine million dollars of fund balance. The unassigned portion of that is just over six million dollars, so I think that's a good place for you to be. Revenues for the year, you can see revenues were ten million, expenses were ten point two, so you had a, a small loss of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So basically, consider that break even in the general fund, right? You, you spent what came in. I'm gonna step back to this slide, though. You spent what came in, but you had assets of nine point seven million dollars, so at the end of the year, you should still have assets of that nine point seven million dollars. So you didn't lose any ground, really, again, other than a small balance of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Enterprise funds, so I, I put all three of them here together, showing revenues for the fund, operating expenses, and then some non-operating items, which could include interest, some connection fees, those sorts of things. So you can see your revenues in the water fund of five point seven million, and the sewer fund of three point seven million, et cetera. And that net income or loss, bottom line, water was, to the good, one point five million dollars. Your sewer fund, four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Your refuse fund had a small loss of seventy-one thousand dollars. And your golf course fund, as you probably know, is, is a tough one to, to even break even, so you had a loss of one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in that fund. So these are all numbers coming directly out of the financial statements that you have. Pension liability. So this has been a hot topic across state and with municipalities and governments. So you have a total unfunded liability of nine million dollars. So that is basically your share of the big PERS liability, right? So you, so you have a couple of different plans. You have public safety plan and a miscellaneous plan. You provide, obviously, pension benefits to your employees. What this nine million says, though, is that as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, you did, you had not put enough into the plan to cover the benefits that you had already committed to. Does that make sense? You had already provided. So if at, if at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, to say it a different way, if at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, you said, okay, city of Lemoore, we're done, you know, we're gonna shut down the city, you would have needed to make a payment of at least that nine million dollars to PERS to, to, to make payments to retirees, right? Because you had already made promises based on your agreements with them. I'm glad to answer any questions with that, but that's, actually, I'm talking about the nine million. It's actually the twelve point three million. But that's, actually, I'm talking about the $9 million, it's actually the $12.3 million, forgive me, but $9 million is for your governmental funds and $3.3 million for your enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, garbage, employees, et cetera. I'd like to share this, and, and this can get a little confusing, so I'll do my best here. So that liability of $12 million that I talked about, the actuaries calculate that, and they use various assumptions. How long people are gonna live, well, who knows? But, but they've got actuaries or experts at this, right? So they put, they have a lot of assumptions that go into it. One of the assumptions is the discount rate, which basically is kind of their long-term investment rate of return. That's like their best guess at how much they plan to earn on investments. That middle bullet point says 7.15, and it says current rate, and you see $12.3 million. So that's what your current liability is. That's based on PERS assumption, the actuary's assumption, that you're going to earn 7.15%. This disclosure is in the financial statements, and they, and the governmental accounting standards board wants it there because they want people to see how a change in this assumption will have a drastic impact on the liability. So you have a liability of $12.3 million, which is that current rate at 7.15. However, if those long-term investments don't return a yield over time of 7.15 and that discount rate goes to 6.15, your liability actually would not be $12.3 million, your liability would be $19 million. If the markets continued and they did great, and you earned 8.15, and the actuaries adjusted their estimate to 8.15, then you don't have a $12 million liability, you only have a $6 million liability. So again, this is a disclosure that's included in the financial statements, and it, it, it helps to give you an idea of the fact that this is one big estimate, and depending on the assumptions, and in this case, depending on that long-term rate of return that the actuaries are using, that number could change drastically. Government auditing standards report, so we, we issued a report on the financial statements. We also issued a report in accordance with government auditing standards for the federal audit, the federal compliance audit, and we identified a couple, and reported, rather, in that report, a couple of internal control weaknesses. So we identified these as material weaknesses. One of them, the first one, is the year-end closing process. So when we came out to do the audit, we identified several errors across various account balances. So we might start looking at accounts payable, as an example, and we find that there might have been a liability that was, was not included. And so we identify it, we propose it to management, say, "Hey, we found this." They make the correcting entry, so the financial statements are now okay because the entry was made. However, we report it as a finding because the city should identify all those errors and not the auditors. Does that make sense? So the auditors are there to identify whether, whether anything's wrong. When we do identify it, then we're required to report that to you. And so we did identify errors in that year-end closing process. The second bullet point says journal entries. So one of the things that we found is that there were a significant amount of journal entries that were being made by the city. Finance team to correct and adjust a, a lot of different things, and they were just excessive, they were not always well-reviewed. And so as a result of that, you might have an error to correct something, but then that was made an error, and another entry to correct that, and it, it, it was just messy. And so we feel like we need to report that to you. So those are the two items that we identified during the audit. Fortunately, with respect to compliance with the federal grant and/or with any other laws or regulations that have an impact on the financial statements, we did not identify any findings. Few final bullet points here. Required communications under the auditing standards. There were no changes to significant accounting policies. I've reported to you the biggest significant estimate, which is that pension liability, the sensitive disclosures in the footnotes to the financial statements, which probably run 30 pages or more, probably the most sensitive disclosure in there, I'd say also, is that pension liability disclosure. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit, only what I, what I've identified, that as we were working in the audit, we, we found errors, and so it took a little bit of, it was a little bit additional work to, to, to identify those, to correct them, to propose the journal entries to make sure that those were posted. We did not have any disagreements with management, and so as we identified something, management, finance team agreed, "Yeah, you know, we should've caught that, we should've fixed that." And so we had no disagreements with them about these matters. And finally, we did not identify any fraud or illegal acts. That's it. So I'm glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Could you just confirm the audit period, please?
June 32, so July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018.
Thank you.
Any more comments by council? I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public, see if anybody wants to expound on that. I see none, bring it back to the council. Can I get a motion to approve this item, or?
Make a motion to approve, approve the report and recommendation of a single audit report for year-end at June 2030, June 30, 2018.
I got a motion by Mr. Brown.
Counsel, this item is just to be received and filed by the council.
Thank you.
So there's no action?
Yeah, it's not an action, it's, the action is to receive and file it.
Then action is to receive and file it.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown, can I get a second?
Y'all make a second to receive and file it.
Got a second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, going down to five dash two. Report and recommendations, American Legion Post 100 requests a renaming city park of Veterans Park. Mr. Click?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight on request by American Legion Post 100 to rename City Park to Veterans Park. A little history with, with City Park. City Park was actually established in 1906. It, it, it became a public park on August 1, 1906, and it's been named City Park since that time. Over the, over the years, there's been two parks renamed. One was Westfield Park, it was renamed Lyons Park. And the other park that was renamed was 19th Avenue Park was renamed Kings Lyons Park. With these renamings, the entities provided additional service projects and provided monetary contributions over the years. This request is a little bit different than those two parks. American Legion Post 100 is not requesting to name the park, American Legion Post 100, they're just requesting to name the park Veterans Park to honor all veterans in the City of Lamore. On December 4, some more history, American Legion Post 100 petitioned the Parks and Rec Commission and eventually city council to build the Veterans Memorial. And every year, the American Legion Post provides new flags throughout the year for that memorial and throughout the city. And then recently, American Legion Post 100 requested to name the, the city park to Lamore Veterans Park. And in turn, and in turn, through this agreement, the American Legion Post 100 would provide a sign located at the Veterans Memorial that would name the park Veterans Park. If approved by city council, we'll have a renaming ceremony on July 4, 2019. On that day, we have a ceremony, a 5K run, starting at 7:30, and we estimate this, this would take place at 9:00 AM. This item has already went through the Parks and Rec Commission, they voted 5-0 to recommend to the city council to rename City Park to Veterans Park. At this time, I'd like to introduce Post Commander Randy McCord, he's Post Commander of American Legion Post 100.
Good evening. On behalf of Post 100, I'd like to thank you for your consideration tonight. I think it speaks well for any community if they make an effort to recognize their veterans, especially now that we're having all volunteer force. This city park on the street gets a lot of use, there's a lot of traffic by there. We went to live expense, put memorial up, and one of my big fears was that it'd be a target for graffiti, and I just think it's amazing that over the years, there's not been one incident. So I think people respect, you know, what we're doing there. What we plan to do is to put a two-by-two granite, black granite plaque on the front face of the big base for the, that the CB's built, the big flagpole. It will match what's existing in our memorial. The letter will be big enough to be very easily read from the street, so we, we would appreciate your approval. Any questions, I can answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it to the public.
I'd love to comment. Being a veteran myself, I can't think of something more proud to have in this town than a park to be named after the veterans, especially the military base. Mr. Brown, I don't want to make you feel bad, but the rest of you, my first term in Vietnam, most of you weren't even born. That was 1969. That was 50 years ago I served in Vietnam. And so as you do the math, all Vietnam veterans today that are still alive are in their 60s. So think about that. The war ended in '73, actually, it was a conflict, it was never a war.
What was that? Seventies.
Seventies. I wasn't talking about the Korean War. But anyhow, it's, it gives me great pleasure to deal with them, and Mr. McCord, my first opportunity to meet him was, he's gonna remember here in a minute, my mom passed away a few years ago at 92 years old, and she said her last request was her brand-new power red electric chair she had, make sure some veteran got to drive that proudly. And today, I think the guy is still driving, he's still driving it today. Bergen Wells, he got that red chair, and he's happy to have it. It was free on behalf of my mother. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public? Going back to council? You guys wanna expound on this?
Yeah, Mr. Click, I just want to confirm that there's not another Veterans Park in Lamore. I, I don't believe there is, but it's not gonna, nobody will be confused by renaming it, right?
No.
Okay. Just, just wanted to double check.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve 5-2. Second?
Got a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
I'm gonna go back to 2.1 to let him give his report.
I'm gonna hit rewind and go back to department and city manager reports. Two dash one, department city manager report with Bruce German.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, apologize for being late. I'll just share with you guys, several days ago, there was a firefighter, EMT, made a call in Wisconsin, treated the guy, the guy, they released him, and he basically walked away from him, pulled the gun and shot and killed him. So we've been over there discussing that, so it took me so long to get over here. This is for the month of April, and we had 22 fire calls, 131 EMT calls for miscellaneous training, for a monthly total of 162 calls. Our year-to-date, as of April 30th, was year-to-date meetings and drills were 18, year-to-date fire calls, 142, year-to-date EMT calls, 490, year-to-date training miscellaneous was 10, for a year-to-date total of 660 calls. Also, on Thursday, we, I was contacted by the airbase several weeks ago, they had a, they call it a homecoming, but basically there was a squadron coming in on Thursday night. They asked us to take our ladder truck out and fly, and fly our flag. Had five people go, it was Brom Rossiter, Joey Tapia, Aaron Anacledo, Griffith Jones, and Councilmember Lyons. They went out there about 1:30 and they got home 9:30 that night, but the way I understand it, it was a pretty awesome deal.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the neatest things I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, but they, 500, 500 people come in, I had them give me a little, the base, give me a little deal, basically it's, we support the homecoming of over 500 sailors returning from a seventh-month deployment around the world on the USS Stennis, carrier Air Group Nine with VFA 14, VFA 41, VFA 97, VFA 151, and FRC detachment on Thursday. I apologize, I have no idea what that is. And they were tasked with operations in the disputed South China Sea and operations in Iraq and Afghanistan. I know they left San Diego, well, seven months ago, and they went, they did go around the world and landed in Virginia, and they were flown home on four or five airliners.
Well, four of them showed up that day, and I think there was one the following day at a time that they didn't know.
But there's some pretty awesome pictures on our, on the website and on our Facebook and stuff, if you guys wanna go ahead and look at it. I know a lot of these guys, the, well, the five of them out there took pictures, and they're just awesome. It was that rainy night with the sun set through the clouds and everything else, and it's almost like it was set up, but it, it was a pretty neat deal. And the airbase has just, they, they've reached out and just said, "Thank you very much, that it meant a lot to them." And I really believe, oh, our association, we decided this year to give out some scholarships for the high school students, and we set a limit of basically $2,000 total, and we have four students that will be receiving $500 each from us for, for continued education. That's all I got. Anybody got anything?
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go down to five dash four. Report and recommendations, tract 839, resolution 201917, and intentions to, I annex and include additional territories in landscaping and lighting, maintenance district number one in the City of Lamore, and I, I levy and collect annual assessment as such as annexing territories in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and thereafter. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have before you a resolution for city council's consideration to declare the intention to annex tract 839 into Zone 11 of Landscape Lighting Maintenance District number one. The proposed annexation territory consists of the planned, the planned 36 residential parcels within the development identified as tract number 839, and is located west of Vine, southeast of Highway 198, and north of Iona Avenue. Will and Financial Services prepared and filed with the city clerk a report entitled City of Lamore Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District number one, Zone number 11, annexation of territory and improvements, and established of new annual assessments commencing in fiscal year 2019, 2020. The attached resolution of intention will, will preliminary, with a preliminary approved, excuse me, the attached resolution of intention will preliminary approve the engineer's report and set the required public hearing on proposed annexation and assessment of added territories for Tuesday, July 16, 2019. Notice of the public hearing will be published 10 days before the hearing and sent by mail at least 45 days before the hearing to the owners of the lots and parcels in the adjoining and added territories, along with a ballot for them to vote for or against the annexation and assessment. Staff will also make sure that the notices are in English and in Spanish. We will also attempt to knock on all 36 of the existing residential lots that are adjacent to the new subdivision, and then we'll at least have one onsite public hearing just to answer any questions that anybody in the existing residents may have. Should the, should the assessment, assessment not be approved, the general fund will maintain maintenance of the streetlights in common areas of the landscape. Staff recommends that city council adopt resolution 219-17 declaring the city's intention to annex include additional territories into Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District number one in the City of Lamore and levy and collect annual assessments in such annexed territories for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and thereafter. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, Madam Counsel? I'm gonna open it to the public. Anybody wanna expound on this? I see there's none. Back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2019, tract 17.
Second?
Got a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. This is going too good today. I don't know why.
I know.
City council reports and requests section six. Six dash one, City Council reports. Mr. Brown?
I just wanna, earlier this month, we had National Police Week, and there at, at the, in Hanford, they had the, they were honoring the fallen law enforcement officers. Just wanna thank everybody who attended that, and thank our Lamore PD for being part of Also, wanna thank the Lamore Volunteer Fire Department for what you guys did, going out there and representing our city. That was huge, Johnny Norris. Monday is Memorial Day. Take a moment, remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for us and our country. One other thing I wanna do is, I wanna get, ask for consensus of council. I'm gonna read this. As everyone knows, our city currently has a council meeting scheduled on the first and third Tuesday of every month. I am asking for consensus of council to direct our staff to draft a resolution to allow only for one meeting a month with an expiration date of December twenty twenty, where at this time, the seated council can adjust as needed. At any time, the current council can rescind the resolution by consensus of council. I believe by doing this, we could increase efficiency, save staff city attorney cost, allow staff more time to prepare for council meetings, and allow for a more overall comprehensive document to be produced. Another benefit for doing this is to allow staff additional time to spend on their many daily tasks, including economic development. As always, if, as always, a special meeting can be agendized at any time to take care of the city's business and the people's business. So, by doing this, you know, we can always call another meeting if needed, but just thinking of the, anyway, that's what I have to say. And so, I'm looking for consensus of council for this. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I like the fact that you, you're, you're saving the city money. We'd get the, we'd get the package probably a week earlier, almost. I'd, I agree with it.
So, council, it would be just direction for staff to bring back the item and then another, next agenda or following agenda items to, so that it could be discussed and voted on at that time.
So, basically, we just need a consent?
Consensus to direct staff to bring it back.
Okay. Yes, I agree with the two. I think it's a great idea, and if, if there was a need for another meeting, we could always, we could always have.
Anytime. We can have more than one. We can have four meetings a month if we have to.
If we need to.
If we, if we, yes, if we need to. I don't wanna, I don't wanna jinx it.
If we need to.
If we need to. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, so, Department of Aging and KCO, everything's going pretty good with both of them. Attended both of their meetings. There's one thing that, well, Mr. Brown over here doesn't like to talk about himself. Who was it? Someone told me, what, what did this guy get recognized for here recently? It's Mr. Rogers. Mr. Rogers, what?
Been old?
Oh, we knew that.
I ain't that old.
What was it? What were we talking about earlier? I thought you got recognized for something. What was it?
I think Rudy Salas is a...
Mr. Brown's being humble, I think.
Yeah.
Veterans award. What was it? We were talking about it. Tell me what it was.
Go on, the staff.
Go ahead, Ms. Well, I, I think he's the veteran of the year.
That's what it is.
Sure is, okay.
I just wanna say, there's more, there's veterans out there that deserve it more than I do. Okay, I'm telling you that right now.
Well, you know, sometimes we need a little bit of recognition.
I'm just saying.
Good job, Mr. Brown.
Yes, I do. Here, stand up. Why? There you go.
And then also, at Amy Ward had, well, the Chamber of Commerce had that, that dinner for the, for the kids. Man, I, I should take better notes. I met somebody, not to mention the kids, they did good. They, they're back-to-back champions. They kept saying that. I wanted to say it, but I met someone out there at that dinner, the grocery outlet. So, there's gonna be a new grocery outlet in the Pioneer Square, and I just kinda wanted to bring notice to that. That and the homecoming, the Navy homecoming, that was, that was a severe experience. I, I really enjoyed that, and I ca, I look forward to doing it again. I really do. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Billingsley?
I have the first Central Valley Airborne meeting next Wednesday, so I'm looking forward to attending that. Also, a, a special mosquito abatement meeting has been called tomorrow, so a couple of meetings upcoming, but really nothing to report out of them. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mayor and Mr. Brown went to attend a San working Valley Policy Conference, May eighth through May tenth. They did an awesome job. They kept us in the loop about the high-speed rail, got updates on new insight of Washington DC, what they got going on, and the planning grant program. Also, I was appointed to the County Air Pollution Board and attended my first meeting. It was in Fresno, covered Bakersfield, they had, I say, Bakersfield, Dinuba, Madera, Mendota, Fowler. And the thing about it is, we was in this building, but yet, they had, you could see the other cities, they were on the web, and they had different one, they go, they headed to this city, so Bakersfield be talking to us for a minute, and then Fowler will be talking to us. It was a very unique situation, so I really appreciate that. Got some more information. I'm learning about the air pollution out here, so it's a new board I'm on, so I think we're going, we're moving in the right direction, and just wanna say, it's now, I think we broke the record, eight twenty. Hold on.
I have one item, Mayor and council members. We're looking to call a special meeting on June fifth to go over the budget proposal. Ms. Spear has a, has a graduation on our regular scheduled night, so she can't be here, and it's kinda important she's here. So, what I'm wondering, do you wanna have two meetings? So, on six-five, it's just the, the budget, or could, would you guys entertain canceling six-four and meeting on just six-five and doing it all in one night?
We could do it all in one night.
So, have it a Wednesday instead of a Thursday?
Not Wednesday.
Public hearing.
You just adopted it. For the landscape and lighting.
All right, believe my last. We have, we can't. Hold on a second. Can we push it?
What, what does it?
It's for the lighting and landscaping.
Yeah, so you just, so just adopt it.
So, we can do that. Seven, four, five. We need to check and see if we can still get the tract eight thirty-nine in at the second meeting in June, so I'll get with staff on that, and I'll, I'll be contacting you as individuals. But if we can work it, would you, would the consensus be to cancel the fourth?
Council?
So, you wanna have it on the sixth, right? Well, we need to have a special, we need to have a special meeting on six-five, if, if you're available.
Yep, I'm available.
And then, six-four, though, because we just motioned the other item tonight, that can't be taken care of at a special meeting, so I would have to push that item to the second meeting in June. We just need to make sure the timing on that doesn't affect anything.
Thank you.
So, I'll get back to you. Okay, I'll get back to you by the end of the week. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you're trying to hold me up. It's now eight twenty-five. Council adjourned.
Eight twenty-five?
We started at seven thirty, right? Yeah. I feel... Thank you, sir. What the hell are we gonna do? What are we doing?
They published it. That was gonna be my question.
Hey, she said...